David Kohn, who has the brains to figure out all the technical aspects and to be able to set this up amazingly effortlessly, as well as Bill Lennon, who sits sitting over to my left. And Bill is the one who coordinates all the questions from the people who join us online. And we're lucky to have Bill. In addition to his considerable rules and competitions expertise, he's also quite a linguist, that he's familiar with all the various dialects around Wisconsin, including the U.P. And so you may not know it, Bill's also fluent in nine different languages. So when you see him typing over here, he's probably replying to say rules, questions from Helsinki or Amsterdam or someplace like that. And then when a good one comes across, he wants to share with the group, he'll translate that for us so we can discuss it. Then he will translate the answer back to the sender. So just yet another service WSGA provides, and we thank you for that.
Jeff was wondering if he has been propped for the coffee there.
And then, yes, and Jeff does an excellent job with the coffee each morning. No, but we're, when we have, you know, I think the best rules and competitions team in the country with Bill and Jeff Percol, and we're very fortunate to have that. To have them, as well as frankly, the considerable volunteers we have, that it continues to amaze me, you know, the time you all put in on this and don't know whether to be impressed or to be sympathetic, that you don't have anything better to do with your time. But either way, thank you very much. So we'll pick up where we left off with rule 12, that we finished with rule 11 last week at the team grounds, or have the player, he's teed off now, and already he can't find his ball. So rule 12, we'll talk about what he's allowed to do to find as well as to identify his ball. Now, rule 12-1 talks about seeing the ball and searching for the ball. In the first sentence is a statement of principle, that a player is not necessarily entitled to see his ball when making the stroke. So if a player says, you know, look, my ball's under this tree, but this tree branch intervenes between the ball and my eyes, so I can't see it, aren't I allowed to do something? That you can say, well, you're not really entitled to see it, so you have to play the ball as a lie, and can't move the tree branch. Next paragraph is an interesting one in that it talks about how the player is allowed to touch or bend long grass, bushes, wind, and other items provided. Basically, this does not breach rule 13-2. So it's just a reminder that it's okay to touch those items as long as you don't actually improve, for example, the area of intended swing. All right, so with the four sections of rule 12-1, we cover four situations in terms of when they play, what a player is allowed to do when, when he can't find his ball or when he's found a ball, but he might not be entirely sure if it's his ball. First section, A, deals with a ball covered by sand. And this is a fairly recent change for 2012, and this applies to sand anywhere on the course, so not just in a bunker or in a water hazard, it also applies to a naturally sandy area, you know, sand dunes lying through the green. If the player's ball line anywhere on the course is believed to be covered by sand such that he can't identify the ball or he can't, where he can't find the ball or identify it, he may without penalty touch or move the sand to find or identify the ball. And it's important to note that there are two different aspects here, both finding and identifying the ball. So find the ball means you just don't see a ball, but you think it's covered in sand somewhere in this area. You can search for it, but this also applies to a situation where you find a ball, and let's say, you know, you can see the tireless two, but you can't quite tell if your orange dot next to the two is on it. So it talks about just take, rather than going through, that while you could certainly lift the ball under rule 12-2, you can also, this rule allows you just to brush away some of the sand, so you can see your orange dot, see if it's your ball. So if the ball is found and identified as his, the player must recreate the lie, meaning move the sand back as nearly as possible. And if the ball is moved during the touching or moving of the sand while searching for or identifying the ball, for example, if your ball's completely covered by sand in the face of a bunker and you're probing for it with your hand or with a bunker rake, and the ball moves, there's no penalty, but replace the ball and then recover the ball with the sand. But it does, the last paragraph does the player some leeway. In recreating the lie under this rule, the player is permitted to leave a small part of the ball visible. So that is a bonus, especially compared to the first sentence of the rule itself, saying you're not necessarily entitled to see your ball, but in this case, you're allowed to leave a small part of the ball visible, which often, you know, a good way to think of a small part would be, say, the size of the tip of your little finger, be a small part of the ball. Yeah?
Okay, you want that ball to be a part of the, where the ball is, if you're trying to find it, you're a little bit of a mess. Break that area, or is it the ball?
Yeah, yeah, well, what you do is, let's say, your, a most common application of this is in a bunker. Is let's say you think your ball is buried in the face of the bunker. So you look for it and you make a mess and you ultimately move the ball. So you have to replace the ball and recreate the lie. So recreate the lie means what you have beforehand, so before you searched for it, that area right around it was smooth. So part of it would be, yes, you would actually rake that bunker face, screw the ball back into the sand, cover the sand up, so then just no part of the ball was visible. So, exactly.
I was gonna say, you know, if we could touch upon where it says, play any touch or move in it in order, in the extent to which you can do that.
Yeah, and it doesn't, the only limitation, it just says, you can touch sand for the purpose of finding or identifying your ball. So, and the benefit of there being no penalty is that you don't have to be super careful while searching for it, and since there's no penalty for moving the ball. So if your ball's in a, if you, or if you think your ball's in a bunker face, you can even take the rake or club or your hand and pretty aggressively search for the ball without fear of penalty if the ball moves.
Yeah, a question on whether you then can rake footprints, that you, that you may, not that somebody else can do, you may, searching for the ball, if there is otherwise by the, the, the.
Oh, okay, all right. So Dan's question is, you're searching for a ball in a bunker, you make a mess. We know that the lie itself, you recreate, replace the lie, leave part of the ball. Then Dan's question, and it's a very good one, is what do you do with all the other footprints that you make? Well, now, rule 12-1A refers to just the lie of the ball, so the area right around the ball. So everything else, now we're under 13-2 and 13-4 in terms of what the player may do. So then it comes down to, and then I believe I actually singled out a decision, and Bill, you can go ahead and mention it now, let me see if I can find that, 13-4. Let's see. Yeah, 13-4/9. Or is it? Yeah, yeah, I guess that's it, but let's just look at that, 13-4/9. In the fact situation's a little bit different, or very different from ours, but the same principle would apply. Player's ball lies in a bunker and a rake's been left in another part of the bunker. Prior to making a stroke, the player retrieves the rake. Having lifted the rake, he smoothes the footprints he just created and some others in the process. What's the ruling? Well, as we'll see under 13-4, that he's allowed to rake, provide two criteria are met. One, he's raking solely for the care of the course, and two, the way he rakes does not breach rule 13-2. So, meaning that he doesn't improve, for example, his line of play. So that's what would determine ultimately whether the player may rake the footprints in that case. And in most cases, I would think the answer would be no, in many cases. You know, often if a player asks you, well, may I rake this, you'd say, well, well, let's not get it out of ourselves, we're 13-4, but you'd say, well, why do you want to rake it? And go from there. So that's, let me bring this back up in a little bit. All right, 12-1B, searching for or identifying a ball covered by loose impediments in a hazard. And before we get into this, let's just step back and put in context of what's a player allowed to do when searching for his ball, say, through the grain covered by leaves, loose impediments. Well, through the grain is allowed to remove loose impediments, but what happens if the ball moves? Rule 18-2 applies, and he would be subject to penalty for causing the ball to move and must have replaced the ball. So that's through the grain, what player may do. Now, if the player's in a bunker or in a water hazard, this provision essentially gives him permission to remove the loose impediments, something he's ordinarily not allowed to do in a hazard. But he still has to be careful while removing them, because if the ball moves, then just as is the case through the green, he is responsible, it'd be a one-stroke penalty, and he would replace the ball. So that is the rule itself, in a nutshell. So now, we'll go through it. In a hazard, ball's believed to be covered by loose impediments such as leaves, such that he can't find or identify the ball. He's allowed to touch or move loose impediments. The ball's found, the player must replace the loose impediments, just as in the first section, he had to replace the sand. And if the ball is moved, rule 18-2 applies. If the ball is entirely covered by loose impediments, the player must recover the ball, but is permitted to leave a small part of the ball visible. So, the, I think the simplest way to think of this is that you're, this rule largely just gives special provision for touching or moving loose impediments. But unlike through the green, the player in a hazard has to replace the loose impediments if he moves them, allowing himself to leave a little part of the ball visible. 12-1C has a very narrow application, and that is, it relates to searching for a ball in water in a water hazard. So both of those criterias, not just anywhere in a water hazard, but only in water in a water hazard. The player may probe for it with a club or otherwise. Now, if the ball is in water in a water hazard, and the ball is accidentally moved while probing, there's no penalty. Ball must be replaced unless the player proceeds under the water hazard rule. But if the moved ball was not lying in water, for example, is lying on the bank outside the water, or the ball was accidentally moved by the player other than while probing, rule 18-2 applies. Now, one point to keep in mind that is interesting with this is later, not this session, but the next session, we'll start to see a number of rules that, for example, under 20-1 or 20-3A or 24-1A, it'll say that a player is exempt from penalty for causing this ball to move only if the movement of the ball is directly attributable to some specific act, such as lifting this ball or replacing it, or moving a movable obstruction. But notice here that that directly attributable standard is not present. And the reason for that is that directly attributable standard is a very high standard. But in this, in this situation, unlike the other situations, the player doesn't know where his ball is. And if the player doesn't know where his ball is, you can't hold him to as high a standard. So, for example, what this would mean is that if the ball is in water in a water hazard and you're, say, actually walking in the water and you're probing with your club, then if you actually, if any sort of movement related to that act, even it's not necessarily directly attributable, if it even is just moving, if that causes the ball to move, that is covered by this, because that happened with probing. What would not be covered would be something completely unrelated, such as dropping your club on it, that's not part of the act of probing. So it is a different and more relaxed standard, and the reason for that, again, is that you can't hold the player to as high a standard when he doesn't know where the ball is, because it's hard for him to take reasonable, exercise reasonable care in such cases. All right, 12-1D, searching for a ball within obstruction or abnormal ground condition. If the ball, so these are items from which a player is ordinarily entitled to free relief. The ball is lying in or on an obstruction or an abnormal ground condition and is accidentally moved during search for it, there's no penalty and ball must be replaced unless the player likes to take the leaf under the applicable rule. And if the player replaces the ball, he could still proceed under one of those rules if applicable. And there's a little, a little twist at the end of why those words, if applicable, are needed, because imagine you have a situation where you're searching for your ball in ground under repair. And let's say it's an area, it's a wet area that the maintenance staff has not been able to mow for a week or two. So a very tall grass, white line around it, and you're searching for it, you accidentally move your ball. As we'll see later, under rule 20-3C, how would a player replace his ball if he doesn't know exactly where the ball was when it lay through the green? He would estimate where it was and drop it. So let's say, if the player goes to the ground under repair, estimates where the ball was, drops it, and then it rolls less than two club lengths into a spot where he now no longer has interference from the ground under repair. Then that's, that's a case where he could not then take the leaf from ground under repair. So that's why at the very end of the rule, it does talk about if applicable, because in that case, rule 25 no longer applies. So penalty for breach of rule 12-1, all four sections is the general penalty. And there can be really just a few ways a player could incur this penalty. One common theme with each section is that if the ball moves, that it must be replaced. And if the player does not replace the ball, then, say, just plays the ball from its new position, then he would incur the general penalty. Another example would be if, say, in section A, he does not replace the sand, does not recreate the lie as required, or in section B, he does not replace the loose impediments as that rule requires, then he would incur the general penalty. All right, so while, while rule 12-1 has some identification aspects to it, it's largely a search rule. You're just trying to search for the ball and find it. Now, rule 12-2 details what the player may do when he finds a ball and he's not sure if it's his. And as we'll see later on in rule 15, that the rules do penalize the player for playing a wrong ball, so therefore the rules have to let the player take some measures to protect himself, to ensure that he does not play a wrong ball, and that's where rule 12-2 comes in. If a player believes that a ball at rest might be his, but he can't identify it, meaning that simply by looking at the ball, he can't tell that it's his, he may lift the ball for identification without penalty, but he needs to follow a specific procedure. And this will be very similar to, but not quite identical to, the procedure on rule 5-3 for lifting the ball to determine if it's unfit for play. Before lifting the ball, the player must announce his intention to his opponent or mark or fellow competitor. He must mark the position of the ball, he can then lift the ball to identify it as long as he gives the other player the opportunity to observe for lifting and replacement, and the other player may weld it. And the ball must not be cleaned beyond the extent necessary for identification when lifted under rule 12-2. So the main difference here compared to rule 5-3 is that under 5-3, the player's not allowed to clean the ball at all when he's lifted it to see if it's unfit for play. But in this case, he is allowed to clean the ball to the extent necessary to identify it. Now, why the difference? Well, under rule 5-3, or just under the rules in general, there is no penalty for playing a ball that is unfit for play. That's not a breach of any rule. But there is a rule that says there's a penalty for playing a wrong ball. So therefore, we really need to give the player the opportunity to make sure that's his ball, even if it means he has to clean it a little bit to confirm that fact.
Um, there's a very specific question, and I think it's happened, where mud covers one half of the tireless and the number, the one, but it does not cover the other half, and the player lifts the ball for identification. If he were to clean off a part of the mud on the side of the ball so that he could see the tireless one or whatever, would there be a penalty in that situation when the player could simply have rotated the ball and identified?
Okay, so you're saying, so the player lifts his ball, one side of it's clean, tireless one on one side is perfectly visible, tireless one on the other side is covered by mud, could he remove, would there be a penalty if he moved the mud? And I, I think the answer would depend as to, does he need to move the, move the mud, for example, to find his identification mark? That if he always puts, let's say, green dots next to the number, and if he doesn't see on one side, then it makes sense to let him look on the other side to see that. But, but on the other hand, if it's, if he says, oh, no, I didn't put any identification mark on this ball, and he's not going to learn anything new by wiping that mud off, so in that case, he could not be able to. All right, so if the ball is the player's ball, and he fails to comply with all or any part of this procedure, or if he lifts the ball to identify it without really needing to, he incurs a penalty of one stroke. So that means if he completely misses the procedure, or if he, for example, does not announce before he lifts the ball and he cleans it, then there's just be a total penalty of one stroke, and that's in both match play and stroke play. If the lifted ball is the player's ball, he must replace it. If he fails to do so, he incurs the general penalty for breach of rule 12-2, but there is no additional penalty under this rule. Now, one point that's interesting, looking at this paragraph, what is the ruling if, let's say, I hit my ball into the rough, I search, search, I find a ball, and without telling Bill, my fellow competitor, without marking its position, I just reach down, lift the ball, then I look at it and say, nope, not mine, stick it in my bag. Any penalty in that situation?
No.
And answer's no, that there's only a penalty if it is in fact my ball. Because if there's, if it's not my ball, then rule 18-2, for example, wouldn't apply to my actions, and neither would 12-2. All right, penalty for breach of this rule is the general penalty with the asterisk, that if a player incurs a general penalty under this rule, there's no additional penalty. So, for example, a player lifts his ball for identification, he does not follow the procedure. Let's say, for example, he didn't mark the position of the ball, and then ultimately, he does not correctly replace the ball. He places it in a wrong place and plays from there. Then in match play, you lose the hole, and stroke play, it'd be a total penalty of just two strokes and not three strokes. And let's see, I can't, the decisions under this are relatively straightforward and relatively few. Any questions on rule 12? Okay, all right, now we'll go to rules, a few more decisions than 12. All right, rule 13, very big rule, because it really supports the, one of the two basic principles of the rules of playing the course as you find it. You're not allowed to change the course to suit your needs. Rule 13-1 start is really largely a statement of principle. Ball must be played as it lies except as otherwise provided in the rules. And we know there are a number of exceptions, for example, take a leaf from a water hazard, take a leaf from a sprinkler head, and so forth. Rule 13-2 talks about what a player may not do to improve certain areas. And before we get into the specifics of the rule, I think that probably is, that there are largely two key points to knowing and understanding this rule. The first is appreciating the structure of the rule, and it's really broken down into three parts. The first part, which is the first four bullet points, lists the areas that are protected by this rule. And then the second section, which is the next, was that, five bullet points, lists the, the actions a player may not take to improve one of the areas in the first section. And those first two sections go hand in hand, you can't just look at one without the other. Then the third section are exceptions, that even if one of those areas is improved by one of the prohibited acts, there's no penalty if that improvement occurred in one of these, what's that, five situations at the end. So to look at that together, so for example, the first section talks about not improving your line of play. But it's not, and it's difficult, but you have to train yourself to think that it's not simply a breach of the rules to improve your line of play. It's only a breach of the rules to improve your line of play through one of these prohibited actions, that otherwise, it's okay to improve your line of play. For example, let's say your ball lies in the fairway, and there is a pine cone six inches in front of your ball. You remove that pine cone, have you improved your line of play? The answer is yes, you have. But is there any penalty for that? The answer is no, and the reason for that is that the second section of this rule does not prohibit improving one of those areas by removing loose impediment. So therefore, since that's not a prohibited action in the second section, there's no breach of the rule. So it really has to, the two section, first two sections go hand in hand. And for emphasis, note that they're even part of the same sentence, granted, a very long sentence. So you're only prohibited from improving one of those protected areas by taking one of these specific actions. Any other action that would improve that area is okay, is permitted by the rules. Now, it, so now, before we dive into that, let's also look at why, why I think's the other important aspect of this rule, and that is appreciating that this rule revolves entirely around improvements to these areas. And, and to know that, let's look at decision 13-2/0.5, which is a very, very helpful decision, is it clarifies what is meant by improve. Because without this decision, there could be another way to look at improve. Some people might, without the benefit of this decision, say improve just means to change for the better, period. And that, you know, I think used to be the old interpretation of this, but this decision was added several years ago, and it's been a big help. And as the answer states, in the context of rule 13-2, improve means to change for the better so that the player creates a potential advantage with respect to the protected areas, the lie of the ball, area of intended stance or swing, or line of play, or the area in which he's to drop or place a ball. Therefore, merely changing an area protected by rule 13-2 will not be a breach of the rule unless it creates a potential advantage for the player in his play. So in other words, improve does not mean simply change for the better. It means change for the better so that there is a potential advantage. Not that there's necessarily an actual advantage ultimately, but that there is a potential advantage. Then the decision goes on to list some examples of actions that would not, that were unlikely to create a potential advantage, and then actions that are likely to create a potential advantage. And let's just go through a few of those. First example is the player repairs, pairs a small pitch mark, or, or say, he's in a fairway bunker and he smoothes a footprint on his line of play, five yards in front of the ball player, to making a 150-yard approach shot. And some of you may remember from, I believe it was 2003, an incident that happened with Duffy Waldorf at TPC at Abinell in the final round, and it was a tough situation, that he had about 175-yard approach shot through 12 hole, and there was a pitch mark. There was wet conditions, there was a pitch mark about three or four feet in front of his ball and slightly to the right. And before he played, he tapped down that pitch mark. And at the time, this decision did not exist. And the, while, and kind of the general consensus or understanding back then as to what improvement was just as the dictionary meaning of change for the better. So he thought, so the PGA Tour officials had the very unenviable task of saying, well, he did improve his line of play, therefore, he's, he's in breach of rule 13-2. And obviously, for PGA Tour players. And obviously for PGA tour player playing from the fairway, a hundred and seventy-five yards out of the pitch mark, four feet in front of his ball, meant nothing to him. He was probably, uh, it, uh, did not affect his play at all. And for him to be penalized seems pretty silly. But now with this decision and this meaning that, uh, in saying that improve means to change for the better so the player has a potential advantage. This makes it clear that if the Waldorf situation were to occur today, that there would be no penalty. Because while he has, uh, made his line of play better, he didn't do so to the extent that he actually now has a potential advantage. So there'd be no, uh, uh, penalty in such a case. Uh, second one, player's balls in the middle of a long shallow faced fairway bunker, smooths footprints five yards in front of his ball and on his line of play prior to playing. And keep that example in mind when we look at, uh, exception two to rule thirteen dash four as well in a little bit. But for the time being, just knowing, know that in that such a situation, smoothing those footprints would not be considered, uh, an improvement because there's no potential advantage. Then third example, it starts to get a little more complicated when you get under a tree and you start moving leaves. Could have a case where a player takes a practice swing, knocks down several leaves that would be in this area of intent and swing. But there's still so many leaves remaining that there really isn't any, uh, potential advantage. We contrast that with the next set of examples where, you know, sometimes move knocking down just a single leaf. Uh, might, uh, might be an improvement. It really depends on the circumstances. And with the second set of examples of changes that are like, are likely to create a potential advantage. Let's contrast that fairly bunker example with now a greenside bunker. That player's balls in a greenside bunker and he smooths footprints five yards in front of his ball on his line of play. Well, has that for a greenside bunker shot created a potential advantage for him? The answer is yes, because with the greenside bunker shot, there is a much greater likelihood that the ball could actually come to rest in one of those footprints that he just moved. So an important, uh, and very useful decision to keep in mind when we, as we, uh, work, work with this rule. But if there hasn't been an improvement, then we don't even need to look at the, uh, rule. Alright, so the, uh, for the text of the rule itself, the player must not improve or allow to be improved. Uh, the following protected areas. Uh, the position or lie of his ball, the area of his intended stance or swing. His line of play or a reasonable extension of that line, uh, beyond the hole. Or the area in which he is to drop or place a ball. So those are the protected areas. Now we'll look at the, the actions that a player may not take to improve those areas. Uh, pressing a club on the ground, moving, bending or breaking anything growing, uh, or fixed. So for example, that's why you can't break off a tree branch that interferes with your swing, can't break off tall grass around your ball. So or anything, uh, fixed, including immovable obstructions and objects that define out of bounds. So this is the provision that, uh, would prohibit a player, for example, from removing a boundary stake that, uh, interferes with his backswing. That if he were to do so, he would be improving his area of intended swing by removing something that is, uh, to be fixed. Player may not improve one of these areas by creating or eliminating irregularities of, uh, surface. Uh, those of you who've been to and who, who will go, uh, next month to a PGA USGA class. Where I seen a video of a player taking a leaf from a cart path and it's great, right before he drops the ball, he very carefully, enthusiastically takes his foot and taps down some tufts of grass where he's going to drop the ball. Might just want to make sure he has a good lie, uh, after he drops it. And that would be a breach of this rule because he's improved the area in which he's to drop a ball by eliminating an irregularity of surface. Uh, player may not improve one of these areas by removing or pressing down sand, loose soil, replaced divots or other cutter placed in position. So for example, if a player, uh, is playing a ball from the fairway, when he addresses the ball, he notices that his, let's say his right heel is on a replaced divot in the divot hole and he's concerned that doesn't give him firm footing for a swing. He can't just kick that, uh, divot out of the hole. Isn't that right, Andy?
Yep.
Uh, and he may not improve these areas by removing dew, frost or water. So for example, the putting green player can't remove, uh, dew from his, uh, uh, line of play or line of putt. Alright, so we have protected areas, prohibited actions. Now we have the exceptions, meaning that there is no penalty if one of these areas is improved by one of these prohibited actions, if that improvement occurs during, uh, the, uh, in these following five situations. And grounding the club lightly when addressing the ball. So notice that the first prohibited action is pressing the club on the ground. The second is ground the club lightly. So let's say, for example, a player's balls in the fairway. He lies just ahead of a sand filled, uh, divot hole. That if a player presses his club onto that sand and that improves lie of the ball or the area of his intended swing, that'd be a breach. But if he just, uh, lightly grounds the club, uh, on that sand when addressing the ball and that happens to depress the sand a little bit and that actually improves the lie or area of intent swing. There would be no penalty in that situation. So there's a fine line between pressing the club on the ground versus grounding the club lightly. Second exception, this is by far the biggest, is in fairly taking your stance. Meaning, for example, if a player goes under a tree to play a ball. And if he fairly takes a stance and that happens to, let's say, bend or even break a tree branch and that improves his area of intent swing, there would be no penalty. So it's a very big exception and it has its own decision to clarify what is meant by fairly taking a stance. Look at decision thirteen dash two slash one on page, uh, one seventy-six. Uh, it, uh, asked the question, what's the significance of fairly? Well, uh, as the answer provides, without fairly, the exception would permit the player to do anything. So use of fairly is intended to limit the player to what is reasonably necessary to take a stance for a selected stroke without unduly improving the position of the ball by area of intent stance or swing or line of play. So it's reasonably necessary without unduly improving. Thus in taking a stance for the selected stroke, the player should select the least intrusive. I would underline that, least intrusive course of action which results in the minimum improvement to the protected areas. The player is not entitled to a normal stance or swing, he must accommodate the situation. And then it lists, as we saw with the previous decision, examples of actions that do constitute fairly taking your stance and actions that do not constitute fairly taking your stance. First section, which case, case there would be no penalty. Uh, first example is backing into a branch or young sapling that that is the only way to take a stance for a selected stroke, even if this causes the branch to move out of the way or the sapling to bend or break. Now, what would not constitute fairly taking your stance deliberately moving, bending or breaking branches with hands, a leg or the body to get them out of the way, the backswing or the stroke. So and, and one point to keep in mind with this, and as an official, it can be, uh, difficult. Uh, these can be absolutely some of the most difficult rulings to make. And sometimes when you have a player before he goes, say, into a bush or into a tree to play the shot, can be worthwhile, can be helpful to just to ask the player, let me, let me know if you have any questions as to what you're allowed to do to play the ball, uh, uh, from there. Is among other things that puts the player on notice that, oh yeah, I need to be careful. And then odds are he will ask you and, uh, and we, which is, uh, which is a good thing. So but, and because sometimes with these situations, a player needs, might need to take his stand, might need to approach the ball from two or more different directions in order to determine which of those is in fact the least intrusive way to take a stance. They might say, okay, I'm, I'm going to play, I, I'm just going to pitch out sideways to the fairway. So if I enter, if I approach the ball from here, this is what happens, uh, to the tree, tree branches. But if I approach the ball from the other side, this is what happens. And then he needs to decide which of those two is less intrusive, uh, and, uh, take a stance in, in such a way. Notice that the decision talks about, uh, taking a stance for the selected stroke. And that's, uh, that's an important point. And if we look at the decision on the opposite page thirteen dash two slash one point five. It asked the question, does the requirement to fairly take a stance restrict the player in the stroke or the direction of play he adopts? And the answer is no, it is a matter for the player to decide on the stroke and direction of play he wishes to adopt. And he's entitled to fairly take a stance for that stroke and direction of play. So in other words, even if the player could have, could not even disturb the tree branch in the slightest if he were to play backwards, that doesn't mean that the rules require him to play backwards. It's up to him to decide which direction he's going to play. And, uh, but once he makes that determination, it's then his responsibility to get his body in the position to make that stroke using the least intrusive, uh, course of action. Alright, so back to the, uh, rule and the exceptions, fairly taking a stance. Uh, there's no penalty if an improvement occurs. Uh, in making a stroke on the backward movement of his club for a stroke and the stroke is made. So what does that mean? Let's say, for example, player's ball was near a bush. And during his backswing, the player hits a branch of the bush and either moves that branch out of the way or he, uh, breaks that branch. That as long as he continues to swing and ultimately makes the stroke, there would be no breach. But if he, what would be the ruling if he, uh, breaks the branch of his backswing and that, um, distracts him and he stops the swing? And at that point, there would be a penalty. There, there would be a penalty. Uh, another exception, the player is allowed to create or eliminate irregularities of surface within the team ground. Or in removing dew, frost or water from the team ground. So the player could, can, for example, tee up his ball and then put his foot and tap down the ground right behind it. Uh, that, that's okay. And believe it or not, you can actually say if you're playing first thing in the morning, there's dew on the team ground. You could, uh, take your towel, mop up dew from where you want to take your stance. Uh, that's okay, but only on the ground. On the putting green, it's okay to improve, for example, your line of play by, uh, removing sand and loose, uh, soil and by repairing certain damage, meaning the ball mark on the old hole plug. So even if your ball is off the putting green, you're still, still allowed to remove sand or loose soil on the putting green because as we saw in the definition of loose impediments, they are, uh, loose impediments when they're on the putting green. Uh, regardless of where, uh, the player's ball lies. Alright, so that's the, the rule itself, uh, two pretty big sentences. And we'll go through some decisions of, uh, leading to that after we, uh, finish with the rule itself.
John, there's an online question, which I think refers to decision thirteen dash two slash zero point five about, uh, improving or the potential to improve. And the question is, do you take into consideration the player's ability regarding the specific, uh, point?
Alright, uh, still is, uh, translated a question from the Japan Golf Association relating to decision thirteen dash two, there's zero point five. And it's a, and it's a good one, asking when determining whether there's been an improvement, meaning whether there's a potential advantage. Do you take into account the player's, uh, skill? And what, uh, I, I was told that the USGA's position is, uh, uh, earlier this month is that ultimately, if it's a close call, you can let the player's skill, uh, almost break the tie. Uh, if it's a close call, then you can say, well, okay, this player is a, is a tour player and clearly this won't affect his play. Or this player is a twenty-four handicapper and, you know, yeah, there's a fair chance that, that this would be an advantage to him. So that's, uh, that's the latest from the USGA. So, uh, a quick question.
Can I talk about tree two before you?
Yeah.
Tree two has four protected areas. My question is, what is the word position in your opinion is that? Is there a, a difference between a lie of a ball and the position?
Okay, alright, well, Dan asked, uh, another good question. First bullet point of the protected areas. Why does it talk about the position or lie of the ball? That, does that suggest that they are two, two different things? And, and it's the type of thing that in all candor, whenever I teach this rule, I try to go over that quickly in hopes that and hope, the hope that no one will, will ask that. And
I don't know.
And now almost made it through twenty sixteen, but not, not quite. But it, it is a good question. And in my, uh, in my view, I really can't think of something that would fall under the position of the ball that would not fall under lie or area of intent swing. And I, yeah, I, I, I think if you took, uh, position or out, that, uh, there would be a difference in the rule. And I, and I know, you know, talking with others that it's hard to think of a, uh, of an example of that.
Could that potentially come under, you know, uh, replacing the ball? And, you know, for instance, if you know the lie of the ball and the spot, you know, they talked about whether or not to drop or play. Could it relate to that?
Uh, uh, whether it could relate to, well, it's true, it could relate to the area where you're going to place a ball, uh, perhaps. I don't know, I, I'm maybe not just since, is that sort of is covered by the last bullet point, but it's, it's a little bit of a mystery. Uh, to me, why, why it uses both of those terms. In fact, I want to go back to, I, I don't think it says so anymore. But the old pre-two thousand and twelve, uh, rule one dash two referred to the position of the ball, as I recall. And nobody quite knew what that meant, uh, uh, either. Why, and there were, there were wide, um, there were very, uh, long discussions as to what it meant in the context of one dash two that, that could position the ball. We include, for example, where the ball might roll along its own. And we, we can have some good conversations about that, uh, Dan. Alright, and again, we'll get back to rule thirteen dash two with some, uh, go through some decisions after we finish up thirteen dash four. Uh, on to thirteen dash three, a much shorter rule. Uh, player's entitled to place his feet firmly in taking a stance, but he must not build a stance. So we know that, uh, placing his feet firmly will include some digging in with, uh, uh, your feet when, uh, in sand, for example. But you can't build a stance, whether it's, uh, for example, in a bunker, you can't intentionally, uh, knock down one face of the bunker to have a more level stance. Uh, we know from crux to other situation, you can't kneel on the towel, uh, to make a stroke. You can't move a bench, uh, over, uh, under a tree in order to play a ball lying in the tree. So I think fairly, uh, well understood. Now thirteen dash four, and a lot of, uh, rule situations can, uh, come up with this. And this talks about what a player may not do when his, when he's, uh, playing a ball from a hazard. That, uh, there are three prohibitions and then there are some, uh, pretty big exceptions to that. First is that the player may not test the condition of that hazard or a similar hazard. So similar hazard would mean the same type of hazards. For example, if you're in the left greenside bunker, uh, then you can't go over to the right greenside bunker and start taking practice swings, touching the sand, uh, in that, that'd be considered testing the condition of the hazard. And we, there's a useful decision thirteen dash four slash zero point five. It has a similar format to those other decisions we just looked at. Uh, it clarifies what's meant by testing the condition of the hazard. Uh, the term covers all actions by which the player could gain more information about the hazard than could be gained from taking a stance. And that, that's, that's really the benchmark. Say if you're playing foam bunker, for example, when you dig in with your feet, uh, you're going to gain some information. So the question is, are you going to gain more information by another act than you've gained by simply digging in with your feet? So that's really the benchmark. And then we have some examples of actions that do and do not constitute testing the condition of the hazard. Now digging in with the feet. Now, digging in with the feet for a stance anywhere in the hazard is permissible. So for example, if your ball's in a bunker, it's okay to go in ten yards away, dig in with your feet and. For some reason, and then go back to your bag and select your club, that's okay to do. And then there can be a fine line though, or some conflict between. The prohibition against testing the condition of the hazard and the prohibition against touching. The, for example, ground in the hazard that we'll see under in the next sec clause B. It says you're now allowed to touch the ground in the hazard or water in water hazard with your hand or a club. So with that in mind, let's look at the. Third and fourth bullet points. So what would be the ruling if the player, say, just leans on. A bunker rake while waiting to play. So he's touching the ground with a bunker rake. There would be no penalty because one, clause B. Only prohibits touching the ground with his hand or club. And clause A would say, or this decision rather would say that, well, just simply touching the ground with that rake is not by itself. So it'd be testing the condition of the hazard. Likewise, if a. Player or his caddy just dips his towel in water and a water hazard and the player's ball lies in the water hazard. To, just to get the towel wet to clean balls later in the round. That would not be considered testing the condition of the hazard. Now, what would be, what would constitute testing the condition would be, say, actually raking. Part of the hazard. So for example, if your ball is. Over here in bunker A, you can't go over to bunker B and just start raking, try to get a feel for the texture of the sand and the depth of the sand. That would be a breach. And obviously, take the, the main thing that this prohibits is taking a practice swing. In the hazard and actually touching the ground in the hazard with that practice swing. So player may not test the condition of the hazardous balls in or similar hazard. B, he may not touch regardless of. What he gains or why, but he may not touch the ground in the hazard or water in the water hazard, but only with the hand or the club. And C, the player may not touch or move a loose impediment lying in or touching the hazard. And this can be extreme that there, that as we'll see in exception two, there are special provisions where a player's allowed to rake. The ground in the hazard, but with loose impediments, it's much tighter. So. You could have a case where, let's say you have a bunker as big as this room. And we're playing in that direction and player's ball lies at that end of the bunker. While he's approaching his ball, he notices that, oh gee, there's a pine cone at this end of the bunker. And being a nice guy, he removes that pine cone. Even though that pine cone has nothing whatsoever to do with his play and he was doing it just to be nice to the people behind him. He would be in breach of this rule because he removed impediment from the hazard in which his ball lay. And, and he'd be penalized. Alright, now for the three exceptions. The first one provides that there's no penalty if the player touches the ground or loose impediments in the. Hazard as a result of or to prevent falling. So there are two different aspects. As a result of, meaning if I walk into a bunker and I just fall. And when I fall, my hands hit the sand, there's no penalty. Now likewise, there's no penalty for touching the ground to prevent falling. So let's say, for example, a player's balls in a water hazard and he's. Thinking about playing his ball from it and he removes his right shoe. And while he removes his right shoe, he perhaps is leaning on. With his left hand on the bunker, on the grass face inside the hazard bank. Or he's, I may lean on a club. That, that, that'd be okay because why is he leaning on? Why is he doing that? Why is he leaning on his club to prevent himself from falling? So by exception, that is okay. And removing an obstruction. So if you remove a bunker rake, lift a bunker rake. From a bunker and while you do so, your hands, hand touches the sand, that's okay, no penalty. Or measuring or marking the position of retrieving, lifting or placing the ball. It's okay if you incidentally touch the ground in the hazard. Likewise, it's okay to place your clubs in the hazard. Common situation, go up to the putting green, you take your putter and your sand wedge with you. When you go into the bunker to play your bunker shot, you leave, set the sand, putter on the, in the sand, that's okay. Now, exception two, which. I can come up a lot as, and as a referee, you'll probably be asked a fair number of questions related to this. And there are a number of issues involved, so we'll, so we'll go through it slowly and with some examples. At any time. The player may smooth sand or soil in the hazard, provided. This is for the sole purpose of caring for the course, emphasis on soul and. And so two criteria have been met and nothing is done to breach rule thirteen dash two with respect to his next stroke. So what does that mean? Let's say, for example, my ball's in a bunker and I want to. And rake some footprints behind my ball. But first, we know, looking at this in the opposite order. That if raking footprints behind my ball would not be a breach of rule thirteen dash two, because rule thirteen dash two does not prohibit. Does not protect the area behind my ball. So we know from that perspective, it'd be okay, but. Then we have to look at the first question, am I doing so for the sole purpose of caring for the course? Well, that could vary. The, for example, if it's, let's say it's a long bunker and I'm doing so. And my ball's ten yards ahead of it and I just want to rake this as a courtesy to the groups behind, then that's okay. But on the other hand, imagine if I'm in the small bunker with a steep face and I'm concerned that my bunker shot's not going to get out. That it might hit that bunker face and come to rest behind me. And if it does, I want to make sure that I have a good lie. Then in that case, I may not rake the footprints because then I'm not raking solely for care of the course. Now, if a ball played from the hazard is outside the hazard after the stroke, the player may smooth sand or soil in the hazard without restriction. And without restriction is a big phrase. And it means exactly what it says, meaning that this provision overrides any other. Possible conflicts in the rules. So let's look at a couple of examples of that. Let's say that. Play my ball from a fairway bunker and I hit the shot outbound. So we know I have to return under stroking distance and have to drop a ball where I just played from. So now we really have a conflict in the rules, don't we? This rule thirteen dash two would say that I could not. Break the area of where I'm going to drop a ball. This rule thirteen dash two would say, whoa, hold on, you, you can't improve the area where you're to drop. By eliminating irregularities at surface. But on the other hand, exception two to rule thirteen dash four says. Wait a minute, if you play from a hazard and ball comes rest outside the hazard, then you can really do anything you want inside that hazard. You can smooth sand or soil without restriction. So without restriction, that means that this exception two would override rule thirteen dash two. Meaning that it, it would be permissible for me to rake the bunker. And situations where that could arise, imagine a case like, say, twelve at Augusta National. Player hits his ball in one of those back bunkers, then hits that bunker shot across the green into the water. He might decide that his best option is to. Is the stroking distance option, playing again from the bunker, in which case he would be allowed to rake that area before he drops the ball. Another example, far less common, but it just, we'll use it just for emphasis of this point. Is a case where, let's say, a player plays a shot out of bunker. And the ball goes up to the green, the green slopes down towards the bunker and the ball is now rolling back towards the bunker. And it looks to the player, like the player's, the ball's going to wind up right back where he played from in a terrible lie. Could he, if he's quick enough, rake that bunker before the ball returns to the bunker? Answer is yes, even though he's doing that for the purpose of assisting himself. That as long as he does that raking while the ball is outside the bunker, that is permissible. So if the key there. Was that that ball was played from the bunker. Now, what would be the ruling if the player? Had been playing over the bunker, he'd been behind the bunker. And he sees the ball and looks like now the ball's going to roll into the bunker. Could he roll? Could he go up, go up to the bunker and rake that bunker while his ball's in motion? And the answer would be no. And what rule would that be in breach of? Well, it's an interesting question, breach of thirteen dash two or do you say one dash two? And you could say with one dash two, possibly in both parts for influencing movement of the ball. But also taking, he's changing the physical conditions of the course for purpose of. Affecting play. So you could, could say. One dash two or possibly thirteen dash two, but I might be more inclined to say one dash two. So with that. So a lot has to happen, so you have to know a lot in order to determine. In order to apply exception two here, that among other things, you need to know why is the player raking? And you need to know whether the raking would be a breach of rule thirteen dash two. In order to know whether it's a breach of thirteen dash two, we also need to know the meaning of improve under decision thirteen dash two slash zero point five. Okay. Yeah, well, let's, let's look at two, let's break it up into two. Situations if we can. First, let's say the player is raking and he's raking. When he's allowed, when he's raked solely for care of the course and without breaching of thirteen dash two. And while he does so, he incidentally moves a loose impediment like a leaf. And that is actually okay. That is decision, I think it's thirteen dash four slash nine point five. And. And it's, it's a good question because it's, there's a little bit of a conflict that, well, okay. One rule says, yes, you can rake, but then another part of that rule says, well, but you can't move a loose impediment. So what, which governs? And generally, not necessarily always, but generally, the permission to do something will often override the prohibition against doing something. So in this case, as the player was doing something, the rules allowed him to do. The incidental movement of the loose impediment is okay. Provided that one, the movement of the loose impediment is in fact incidental to the act permitted. And nothing is actually improved. And furthermore, he's not required to replace the loose impediment. You know, what, what, you know, Bob, you're absolutely right that. You can look at all this and say, and really to make your point even more extreme. Let's say again, bunker the size of this room, my ball's over there playing that direction. On my way up to the ball, I pick up a rake from right here and when I do so, I disturb the sand. So being a nice guy, I tidy up that area just for care of the course. And then I go forward and play. No, no breach at all. Because I did that for care of the course and there's no breach of rule thirteen dash two. But on the other hand. And now a player, next group comes along, area is nice and smooth, but a pine cone's fallen in the exact same area. And the player picks up and moves that pine cone for the same reason. You know, to, to be a nice guy, not, and it has no impact whatsoever on his play. He would be penalized. And it is difficult to justify different results for two pretty similar acts, but that's unfortunate. Just, just, the rule does provide for the different results though.
How did, how did you, you know?
Alright, well, Bill asks in, yeah. In that seminal work contained in simplegolfrules.com. How, for example, in code two of that, would that be resolved? As I recall, what we did, said was that it's okay. That with this alternate set of rules, which is not what we're here to study, is that it's okay to move loose impediments from hazards. That, that you have the same rights to play the ball as you do through the green. Alright, exception three. If the player makes a stroke from a hazard and the ball comes to rest in another hazard. Rule thirteen dash four A does not apply to any subsequent actions taken in the hazard from which the stroke was made. Alright, so that's a narrow application to a specific set of facts. So what does that cover? Let's say that a player. Is in a, the left greenside bunker. Hits the shot then, goes across the green into the right greenside bunker. If he stays in the left greenside bunker, takes some practice swings, touching the sand. Something that ordinarily couldn't do when his ball lies in this other bunker, there's no penalty in those specific circumstances. He's already played from the hazard. And the ball is in another hazard. So he is allowed to test the condition of the hazard that he just played from. Yeah, yeah, that's exactly right. About ten or fifteen years ago, at the drought tournament, tenth hole, VJ Singh was. Hitting his third shot from the bunker seventy-five yards away, put in a greenside bunker, then took some practice swings in the first bunker, touching the sand. And before this exception was there, that would have been a breach of the rule. But at the time, everyone said, well, does that really make sense? Because one, you can have a case where, or many cases, where the player might not even know his ball's in another hazard. And then secondly, that just doesn't quite seem right to, or really realistic to prohibit a player from doing that. Then we have a note that reminds us that at any time, including that address, it's okay to touch. Even with a club, an obstruction, an integral part of the course, such as, say, a railroad ties or a stone wall inside a hazard. Or a grass, which is true, or other growing thing in the hazard. So. This draws a distinction, really reinforces the point that. The grass is different from the ground itself in the hazard. So, for example, this summer at Oakmont with the US Open in June. There are a number of ditches running throughout that course that presumably will have tall grass in them. And players, if a player hits his ball into one of those ditches and plays the ball. He can certainly, it's okay to touch the grass, the tall grass with his claw, but it dress or even the backswing. That just touching that tall grass by itself is different than touching the ground itself. That there is a distinction between the two. Alright, and penalty for breach of this rule, so this would be for all four sections, is the general penalty. So for example, if a player. Breaks a tree branch, improves his area of intent swing, he builds a stance, or he removes a. Loose impediment from a bunker, it would be the general penalty.
Could you provide an example where a player breaches rule thirteen dash one? That is not an eighteen dash two violation?
Uh, yeah, an example of where a player can breach rule thirteen dash one, that is not also a breach of rule eighteen dash two. And there's a decision under, is it eighteen two, where the player basically just. Where the player substitutes balls and plays from. Let's see. That. When the player, let's say, for example, and we'll find the decision probably next time. The player's ball lies in the fairway. He sees it, knows where it is. So what are the rules requiring him to do? The rules require him to play that ball from that location. But instead, for some reason, he drops and plays a different ball ten feet to the sun. Then what, what has he done? Well, rule eighteen dash two doesn't apply because he hasn't lifted that ball. Or what he's done is he substituted balls and he's played from the wrong place. So I think part of your question would be, and it's a good one, how can you. Incur a penalty under thirteen dash two without also incurring, without there being improper substitution as well? I have to think about that for next time, because I'm not. How there can be, well, you did. How there can be, well, you have to think about that. In that, that example I gave was more meaningful back before there was a penalty cap, back when the player would be penalized for then for substitution and for playing from the wrong place. All right. Let's look at some of the decisions under rule thirteen. All right, thirteen dash two slash eight. We touched on this a little bit when we covered rule one dash four relating to equity. And there are several decisions that relate to this principle, but this, this is, it's a good one to know. Players lie line of player area intended swing through the green as affected by a pitch mark made by another player in this group. Is the player entitled to repair the pitch mark? So let's say, for example, the player's tee shot or par three comes to rest on the fringe of the green, eighteen inches from the putting green surface. And there's a pitch mark made by someone else in this group. Ordinarily, we know you're not allowed to repair pitch marks on your line of play if that would be an improvement. So the question is, are there any circumstances in which the player could repair that pitch mark? And the answer depends on the facts of the situation. As the decision provides, if the pitch mark was there before the player's ball came to rest, then he's stuck with it. So for example, if Bill played, his ball created that pitch mark on the fringe and then I played, my ball wound up behind that pitch mark, then I'm stuck. There's nothing I can do with it. But if the pitch mark was created after my ball came to rest there. So if I hit my ball up eighteen inches off the green and then Bill played and his shot created this pitch mark between my ball and the fringe of the green, then I may repair the pitch mark. And here's the key, the player's entitled to the lie as well as line of player intended stance and swing, which his stroke gave him. So since that was altered by someone else other than me, even if it was my partner, I'd still be entitled to repair it. So it's a useful principle that can have other applications in the rules. Yep.
Two quick questions online. One, the question is, does the note, which appears under section three, rule thirteen dash four, does the note apply only to rule thirteen dash four or could it apply to the entire rule thirteen? I guess that would simply be thirteen dash two.
Okay, so the question from the Italian Golf Federation at any time is whether the note at the end of rule thirteen, whether it applies to rule thirteen dash four or also to rule thirteen dash two. And it's really part of rule thirteen dash four. That that's, it's really just a reminder to say that, as we said before, that those items, the obstruction and the integral part of the course or grass push or tree or other growing thing are not considered to be grounds in the hazard. So touching them is not a breach of rule thirteen dash four. And you could have a case certainly where touching those items could breach rule thirteen dash two. For example, if you touch that grass in such a way that, you know, you bolted over and now you've improved area of your intended swing, that would be a breach of rule thirteen dash two, even though there's no breach of rule thirteen dash four.
Second question is, could you explain the status of large solidly embedded rocks in a bunker and any prohibited activity?
All right, so what's the question or what's the status of large solidly embedded rocks in a bunker? Well, not quite, it's talking about, you know, like large stones that are flush with the ground. Assuming that's the case, then if they're, if they're solidly embedded, then we know they're not loose impediments. And even if they were loose impediments, you couldn't remove them from a, anyway. So that means they're really now just part of the ground. So they're, they have the same status as the sand itself. So you can't, you could not touch those, for example, during your backswing in the bunker. Yeah. Harbor Town. Oh, yeah, well, what happened there? There have been actually two things have come up, the Harbertown Tournament. One was, they said Brian Day.
Brian Davis.
Brian Davis. He was, he did his second shot into the lateral water hazard near the eighteenth green. And I forget, was it with his backswing? He touched some reeds or tall grass and playing the ball. And then it subsequently turned out that those reeds or tall grass had actually been detached and were loose impediments and they were not growing. So for that, that he was penalized for touching loose impediments. But they had not been detached. If they had been growing rooted in the hazard, then there would have been no penalty. And then there was, I think, can be what you're referring to is Stuart Sink, his ball in the sixteenth hole there. They have a large area they play as a waste area through the green where, I forget, he had some pebbles or something near his ball and he was removing that.
While they were playing stones in bunkers.
Oh, okay.
Obstruction. And he was removing the thing.
Oh, okay, okay. So when he removed.
The question prior to that one now makes sense as he kept writing. The example that he's talking about in his question about solidly embedded rocks in a bunker, I think what he meant was a hazard. And what he was referring to is last week on the sixteen pole, the island pole, Jason Duckman's ball was in a hazard.
Okay.
And could he touch the rocks in the hazard? It is part of his backswing.
Oh, 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 okay, okay.
But that's construction declared by the court to be an integral part of the hazard.
Oh, I didn't see that. So it on the island green.
Oh, it's the most incredible up and down property other than Tiger's Augusta ever.
But the announcer said that he tested it. He didn't know that it was an integral part of the course.
Maybe it wasn't.
Oh.
But there were the rocks that shore up.
Okay.
The sixteen green, the rocks that, yeah, yeah, seven. The rocks that shore up the hazards or the green, but are inside the margin of the hazard.
Okay.
And he hit his ball where it lay on top of one of the rocks and it just so happened he had a little bit of a room to make a backswing and he got it up and down from there.
You know, it's funny, I'm trying to picture the whole and I, I think that's a matter ultimately for the committee needs to clarify what the status of those rocks are. That, for example, the committee could say that they are an immovable obstruction, that they're an artificial wall. The committee could say they're an integral part of the course. And if the committee said either of those, that they're an obstruction or an integral part of the course, then the player could touch it. But or on the other hand, if the committee were to say, well, it sounds like they're solidly embedded, the committee can't, they're not loose impediments. So then the committee needs to clarify. Wouldn't be a bad idea to clarify they just are the grounds inside the hazard, in which case you couldn't touch it.
But you said nothing on the local rule sheet.
Well, then I would ask the committee. No, yeah, the committee says nothing. I mean, I'm trying to think if by default, if they're solidly embedded, that means they're not loose impediments, does that mean they are ground in the hazard? And I've been trying to think that that is the case.
And I'd say that, because like in a high school tournament, they're probably not handing out a local rule sheet. And if you came across a situation without a rule sheet, how would you move the ruling on that?
Actually, if you compare the seventeen pole at PCC West, PGA West with seventeen pole at PCC Doggrass, one has timber and that's an integral part of the court. And this is foundation are rocks. They really should be the same.
Well, I, as I said, ultimately, I think it's for the committee to decide. It could well be that just for absolute clarity, committee might say they're an integral part of the course. Does that way your spell out where you don't get relief from it? But I, and one thing though, it's interesting, if the committee were to say that they are an integral part of the course, then what does the note provide? That, yeah, you could ground the club. But so, you know, it's, so ultimately, it's just for the committee to need to decide either way. They quite, yeah. Well, yeah, I want to look at that. I didn't hear that. All right. Let's see, back to thirteen two decisions. Let's see, decision thirteen dash two slash twenty-five is, is an interesting one. And it's a useful one to know because it reinforces the notion or points out the fact rather, that there is no correction mechanism for a breach of rule thirteen dash two. In other words, once you breach rule thirteen dash two, there's no way to remedy that and you're stuck with the penalty. So this particular example deals with a case where the player removes a boundary stake. And he realizes he made a mistake and replaced it before playing. What's the ruling? Well, the player was in breach of rule thirteen dash two the moment he moved the post and there was nothing he could do to avoid the, to avoid the penalty. The replacement of the post before the next stroke was irrelevant. And the way to look at it is that for some period of time, whereas ten seconds or sixty seconds, the player had improved the area of his intended swing by doing something he was not allowed to do, by removing something that was deemed to be fixed. So he was in breach of rule thirteen dash two as soon as he did that and he did not need to replace the stake. Yeah, yeah, and the smart player at that point should just leave it out and play. Because he's already, as you said, John, he's already paid the two-stroke penalty. All right, let's see. One decision that's useful to referees, thirteen dash two slash twenty-nine point three on the opposite page. Would a player be prohibited from smoothing footprints if he'd been required to enter the bunker to retrieve a ball? For example, as we'll see under rule twenty dash two, see if a drop ball rolls into a bunker, bunker, you have to retrieve it. Answer is no, meaning he is permitted. The player's entitled to restore the bunker to the condition it was in before he entered it. All right, into thirteen dash four. Thirteen dash four slash three point five just points out what we discussed before with exception one to rule thirteen dash four. Player to prevent falling uses a cane or club to enter the hazard. Is that okay? That is okay, provided nothing's done, constitutes testing the condition of the hazard or improves the lie of the ball. So the use of a cane or using a club or more likely using a club as a cane is permitted if it's for the purpose of keeping yourself from falling.
Another question from the Italian Golf Federation. It says, is touching a penalty or do I have to move it?
All right, is touching a boundary state a penalty? And the answer is that, no, just touching it is not by itself a penalty. But when you look under the middle section of rule thirteen dash two, second bullet point, it talks about moving, bending or breaking anything growing or fixed that improves things. So simply touching the boundary stake is not prohibited under rule thirteen dash two. And actually, yeah, well, here's a decision that touches on Dan's question from earlier, thirteen dash four slash eleven. Player searches for his ball in a bunker and in the process makes numerous footprints. He subsequently finds the ball before playing, may he or his caddy smooth the footprint. Answer, exception two, rule thirteen dash four will allow the player to smooth the footprints provided two criteria are met. It's done for the sole purpose of caring for the course. And secondly, nothing is done to breach rule thirteen dash two. Therefore, any footprints made that have worsened in the area covered by rule thirteen dash two must not be smoothed.
So essentially, if you had a righty player, you would want that player to be to the right of the ball and doing whatever it was. Or if it's a left-handed player, he would be to the left of the ball because then that player could always rake the footprints where his team could be correct.
Yeah, correct. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So and again, with this, we need also to get back, remember the definition of improve in terms of creating a potential advantage. So in that regard, I'm wondering if that final sentence is, is an absolute truth. Any footprints that have worsened an area covered by rule thirteen dash two must not be smoothed. Well, you know, we need to know whether that's true. We need to know if they're raking, they're smoothing would in fact constitute an improvement. Because for example, if it's that example of a shallow fairway bunker and there are footprints five yards in front of his ball, we know that ordinarily that would not be considered an improvement and therefore not a breach of rule thirteen dash two, even though that is an area covered by rule thirteen dash two. But just something to keep in mind with all that, that yes, while the player's required to recreate the lie of the ball itself, everything else in terms of what he can rake is governed by exception two to rule thirteen dash four.
So you have a fine transition from twelve and thirteen. Rule twelve deals with a lie, which is what, size of an interplay? And what, is that what we're talking about?
I, yeah, but what's the, yeah, rule twelve dash one, what's that? A talks about recreating the lie with the lie being, you know, the size of the plate. And no, there, I can't, I can't point to anything that confirms what that size is, but that, I think that's a fair statement. And then, then this decision would basically apply to everything beyond that.
There's a pretty fine line between, you know, now testing the distance.
Well, see, what's interesting, and that's a good question, Kyle, is that what if the player were to say that, well, you know, I want to rake these footprints because I want to see what the sand's like. Well, if he says that, then he's not raking for the sole purpose of carrying for the course. So he couldn't do that. Yeah, John. Okay, thirteen dash four slash hun's question is whether this also applies to a coach. Let's look at the decision very quickly. Player's ball lies in a bunker, asks for a ruling from a referee who enters the bunker to make the ruling. After the ruling, may the footprints of the referee be smoothed. Well, we know we already have exception two that allows some smoothing. But so the question's really two areas that exception two would not allow to be raped. They say they may be raped because of the referee's involvement, which also is one reason why when refereeing, you know, it's a good idea to try to do everything you can to stay out of a bunker with a player. And your question was if the, if a coach goes in the bunker, example, to help the player decide how to play or whatever, could, would the same thinking apply? And the answer to that, I think, would be no, that even though, that while the coach is entitled to give the player relief, he's not, he doesn't have to enter the bunker. Where the thinking behind this decision is that, well, the player's entitled to get a ruling and if the referee has to enter the bunker for that purpose, then he can, then the bunker can be restored. It's a, it's somewhat similar to that earlier decision where the player has to enter a bunker to retrieve a ball that he has to redrop. But that's really a case where he's required to enter that bunker. And you could argue that in this case, the referee might be in some way required to go in there. But the coach isn't really, he's entitled to go in there, but he's not required to go in there. So I guess how I look at it.
If John Morris said it called him to a bunker and have to go into the bunker to make the ruling, you make a conscious effort to avoid the areas covered. the ruling, you make a conscious effort to avoid the areas covered by rule 13-2?
All right, so if a referee has to go into a bunker to make a ruling, would you try to approach it to avoid the areas covered by rule 13-2? I think that's a good starting point, because that will increase the chances of the player to be able to rake it. There's still a chance that the player might want to rake the area because he thinks the ball might hit the face and come back there, in which case he couldn't rake it, but I think that it's helpful to do that.
John?
Yeah.
I'm going to go back to, we're looking to improving line situation that's moved. The first senior tournament we had was Madison and Blackhawk Country Club, and we played forces, and one guy got it. The three guys are within one stroke playing strategy four. Player A, and these are all Hall of Famers, hits one out of bounds, but basically he's out of the picture. But he's a very good friend of player B, who lost the hole there. Player B hits his hole over the green near an out-of-bound state. So player A feels, well, I'm out of it, I just hit one out of bounds, so, and his gun goes over and he picks his feet out of the hole like that. And I go over and say, hey, you can't do that. And I'm talking to him, and he says, that's a penalty for who? For the person, I assume, who's picking it up, even though it wasn't his ball. Meanwhile, player B, aha, plays shot, because he really didn't have any respect to that yet, puts it up like this, and makes the putt and goes on, and goes into playoff for the championship. And I penalized player A for moving that. And then B got the advantage because he played quickly. And now the question, player C, who was, who started to question that, whether or not he should have been one, he played a shot, two, you know, penalized, but yeah. And I said, no, the penalty's on A, that's what I said. I don't know what it was like.
Well, so the question involves a case where a fellow competitor removes a boundary stake that improves the player's area of intended swing. Well, I think under rule 1-2, we'd say the fellow competitor is penalized. And then the question is whether, there are two questions, whether the player himself is penalized, and secondly, whether there's any requirement to replace the stake. And the player himself would be penalized if he allowed that to happen, because this rule 13-2 starts out, a player must not improve or allow to be improved. So if he saw the fellow competitor doing this and did not stop him, then he would also be penalized.
And I asked him that, and he said, I didn't know, I didn't even know there was an out-of-bound state there, now whether or not he was giving the action to come on. But that's what he said, he said, I didn't know what happened, you know, I haven't ruled out, but quickly went up and played the shot.
And then, so.
It was all moved because player C won the tournament. That's right.
All right, well, that sounds like a good result. And then the question is, if, if the player did not know this was happening, and so he's not breachable 13-2, should there be any requirement to replace the boundary stake before he plays? And the answer is, there is no requirement, that he could wind up getting a great break in that case. You know, just as frankly, would be the case if, say, a spectator removed it without the player's knowledge. Player, player gets active a break. All right, let's also look at decision 13-4/19. You can tell several, how many of these decisions involve exception 2 to rule 13-4. This is a fairly realistic situation. Balls of A and B lie in the same bunker, with B's ball farther from the hole. B plays, and his ball comes to rest near the hole than A's ball. Is A entitled to have the bunker restored to its original condition? So we know that under exception 2 to rule 13-4, that A could do some raking for sole purpose of care for the course and without breaching rule 13-2. However, imagine a case where, say, both these players are in the road hole bunker of 17 senior year, small pot bunker, and the player is concerned that, you know, his next shot's not going to get out, and fair chance his ball could wind up in the footprints of this fellow competitor just made. So in that case, he would not be raking solely for care of the course. Is he entitled to any remedy? Answer is, yes, he is. That A is entitled to restore the bunker, I mean, the entire bunker, to its original condition by raking or other means, even if this involves an area covered by rule 13-2 with respect to his next stroke, and anyone may do the raking. And you could say this is really an extension of that principle that the player's entitled to what a stroke gave him, that when his ball came to rest in this bunker, there weren't all these footprints in it. So therefore, the footprints this fellow competitor made, he could have, he could rake, or restore the bunker to its original condition. So that's a good one to note, is that that can happen a fair amount. 13-4/31, touching sand in bunker during backswing. Player playing a shot in bunker actually accidentally touches the sand when making his backswing. What's the ruling? Well, rule 13-4 prohibits touching the ground in the bunker before making the stroke. Remember, the stroke is just the downswing, so the backswing is not part of the stroke. So there is a penalty for touching sand in the bunker with your backswing. 13-4/35, so-called Arnold Palmer decision, that happened with him at Masters in the early 70s. This happens a fair amount. Player makes a stroke in a bunker, but the ball stays in the bunker. Then he swings the club into the sand, but the action does not affect a new lie in the bunker. Is he in breach of rule 13-4? Answer is yes. That at first, while at first that might seem like a harmless act, because he's already played from the bunker, simple fact is that nothing in the exceptions rule 13-4 allows him to touch the sand with his club in those circumstances, and therefore he would be penalized. All right, and that is it for rule 13. One point to keep in mind, when you just look at rule 13, there are a lot of decisions under this, and that shows what a big and important rule 13 is, especially 13-2 and 13-4, that it's a good one to know, know very well.
Got a question, bud?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Decision 13-2, 8.5. Player's ball is on the fringe, some of the sand on it. The decision says, not only can he remove the sand, but he can clean the ball. If you're the rules official, and you see that on the ball, there is a fairly large piece of mud that could not have been deposited by the sand on the bunker. Do you allow the player to clean the ball except for the mud? Or does this decision say he can clean the ball, meaning he can clean the whole ball?
Okay. All right, so decision 13-2/8.5, question being that there, the ball in question had a clump of mud on it that clearly was not the result of the bunker shot. Does that change the fact that, or change the permission of the player to clean the ball? And I suppose what I would say is that if there is in fact sand on the ball from the bunker shot, then I think you have to let the player clean the whole ball. I don't think from a practical perspective, you can say you can just clean the sand off the ball. But I think you could have a case where, you know, the decision says deposits sand on and around the ball, or you could have a case where in some cases, there might not be sand on the ball, in which case all the player would do is be allowed to remove the sand from around the ball. But, but if there is sand on the ball, you know, you have to let the player remove the sand from the ball, and from the practical perspective, I'm not sure we can say you can remove the sand, but not the mud.
We have a question from the Jeff and John Federation, which says, getting back to decision 13-4/19. Would player B have to recreate the footprints he made because he now would reap the advantage of smoothing them for player A?
So, so in 13-4/19, B's ball is farther from the hole, B plays, so this question is, is A entitled to restore the bunker? And the question was?
I believe the decision says, may be restored by one, but I'm just reading off that.
Right, the decision is, is B the first person to play, is he required to restore his footprints?
It said, would player B have to recreate the footprints he made because he now reap the advantage of smoothing them for player A? Not entirely.
I'm not, not entirely sure. There's, the decision says, either player may rake, may rake the bunker, and I don't think B has to restore any of B's footprints. Because again, the way, I think the best way to look at that decision is to say that when it's player A's turn to play, he should be entitled, he's entitled to have the bunker basically in the same condition he was in when his ball came to rest in it.
Yeah.
And that would be without any footprints from player B in it at that time.
And it would not matter who raked it.
Yeah, and it would not matter who raked it. Yeah. All right, so any questions on rule 13?
Yeah. If you're not, you're not at the bunker, but the bunker has a green, green, whatever, uh, 13, it's not a, 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 it's And there's in many of those cases, there'll be more than just that momentary contact from the club head and the ball. And with 14-1, as we'll see, and the same applies to 14, both sections of 14-1. If the player makes an improper stroke, or he pushes the ball, or whether in the next section anchors the ball, we'll see that the penalty is loss of hole or two strokes. And stroke play, an important thing to keep in mind is that the stroke itself, even though it is an improper stroke, does count in the player's score. And the player would then add two penalty strokes. So if a player, say, scrapes a ball for his second shot on a hole, he counts that stroke, so he lies two, and then he adds two more penalty strokes, so he lies four after that. 14-1B, anchoring the club. As I think everyone's known for almost three years now, this was coming, this is now in effect. This is the rule itself. In making the stroke, the player must not anchor the club either directly or by use of an anchor point. And then we have a couple of notes explaining what all that means. That a club is anchored directly when the player intentionally, and that's an important word, holds the club or the gripping hand in contact with any part of his body, except that player may hold the club or gripping hand against a hand or forearm. So as you see, some players like Matt Kuchar, they have long putter go up their forearm like this, and they hold it against their forearm like that. That is okay. Note 2 is that an anchor point exists when the player intentionally holds a forearm in contact with any part of his body to establish a gripping hand as a stable point around which the other hand may swing the club. And we'll, before we leave that, let's just look at a couple of decisions under that. Or especially, yeah, a couple of decisions under 14-1B. 14-1B/2 clarifies what note 2 means. And this is important, as it states in the answer, for an anchor point to exist, the following two criteria must be met. One, the player must intentionally hold a forearm against the body. And two, he must grip the club so the hands are separated and work independently from one another. So in other words, what the player can't do is he can't anchor his forearm against his body and then putt like that. But if he were to anchor the forearm against the body, but the hands were separated, that would not be an anchor point, though. So that would be okay. And the next decision, 14-1B/3 clarifies what's meant by the forearm. That's the part of the arm below the elbow point. So what does that mean? That means that if you somehow anchor the elbow point on the body, that that would be, where that, that, that is, that that would be okay if somehow you can contrive your body to do that.
Can I go back to an important one, where it's spoon?
Okay.
A well-known player, I'm a student right now, a student player, had a ball up against a, an out of bounds down, very close to it. And I witnessed it from a distance away, but he put his club behind that, and he gave it, always moving, and knocked it on the green, I think it was, you know, a bad shot. It looked like a spoon, like I said, did you spoon the shot? And he said, what, what is spooning? And I said, well, I thought that you had a spoon and you had an egg, and you put the egg in a spoon like that, and then you tossed it to somebody, that would be a spoon. He said, well, I didn't do that. He said, I had my club about maybe an eighth of an inch behind the ball. Not touching the ball, and then I made the forward motion of the stroke, so it was fairly striking ball.
Yeah, well, Gene, I think that's the same point as with that other decision we just looked at, that with the half-inch backswing, as to whether there's just momentary contact between the club head and the ball. Now, I think with an eighth of an inch backswing, that there would not be momentary contact, there'd be more than momentary contact. So I'd think there'd be a good chance that he did spoon the ball. And then, decision 14-1B/6. When making a stroke, a player's club or gripping hand inadvertently comes in contact with or brushes against his body, is he in breach of this rule? Answer is no. The prohibition applies only to a player who intentionally anchors a club. And it'll be interesting to see if we have any issues with this in WSGA tournaments this year that occasionally, as I think you saw on PGA Tour, it was a Hawaii tournament, they had to ask a player who it looked like his hand or club touched his, touched his body during the swing, whether he did that intentionally. And he confirmed, no, it was not done intentionally, in which case there was no breach. But sometimes that, that may come up. But, you know, I think the USGA's done a really, has done a good job with this. If you go to the USGA website, they have all sorts of videos and graphics and diagrams of what is and is not permitted. Does a good job of walking through all of that. And I think it's, should be pretty well-understood by the players as to what's permitted. So there really shouldn't be, I, I'd be surprised, I'd be very surprised if there was a single breach of this rule in a WSGA event this year.
Those committee members will be receiving colored show that land.
And we'll be distributing those at the meeting. Okay, okay. And this is something, yeah, the WSGA Rules Committee meeting in April, where we'll talk about the 2016 rules changes. We'll spend some time talking about this, and Bill's, Bill will have a nice little, Bill and Jeff will have a nice little package for everybody. Alright, yeah.
Watching the senior tournament. Hawaii, Hawaii, whatever.
Hawaii, Hawaii.
I could have sworn Bernard Lainey had his left hand against his right hand. Watson, they got the goal. He just looked like Samuel Samuel, but he wasn't tall enough. So I'm assuming that he had it, it was working, like it was away from, from his head.
Yeah, I, I, I didn't see that, and that's what I'm worried about, but. I know, I would. Yeah. Well, I, it's, it's a matter of question of fact whether he intentionally had it anchored against his body. He must not have, but I, I didn't see a clip. And, you know, so he must have just been holding it out like this, but, or holding it close.
A guy like Tim Clark, he's got a worse problem than Langer.
Well, if he anchors his elbow, that's as well, right?
Well, you see, anchoring your elbow is, is what, what the anchor point prohibition is about, anchoring your forearm. With that. Oh, yeah, and likewise, 14-1B/7 is similar to slash 6 about, you know, any incidental contact with the clothing and so forth. And as it says, this might occur in various situations, such as where the player's wearing moose-fitting clothes or rain gear, where the player's physical size or build has his arms naturally close to the body, where the player holds the club extremely close to the body, where the player, for some other reason, touches his clothing and making a stroke. So if it's just, if it's incidental, non-intentional, then that's not a breach of this rule.
The forearm is below the elbow.
Yeah, yeah, so elbow is not part of the forearm. Yeah, I think, I think that's Dan's favorite decision in the book. Alright, 14-2, physical or assistance, broken into two sections. A player must not make a stroke while accepting physical assistance or protection upon the elements. So I think we've seen, you know, that old photo from the twenties or thirties about with the dog holding on to a little boy trying to play a shot from the water, you know, can't do that, or protection from the elements. So that means, for example, your caddy cannot hold an umbrella over your head while you're making the stroke. He can hold it up your head, over your head until your stroke, but not during it. 14-2B, position of caddy or partner behind ball. That during the stroke, the player's caddy, partner, partner's caddy must not be positioned on or close to an extension of the line of play or line of putt behind the ball. So it's okay for that person to be positioned there before the stroke to help you with alignment. But then that player needs to step to the side before a player actually plays. Oh, you're, you're absolutely right. Or close to, and that's sometimes, you know, can be close, no pun intended, to determine what is meant by, or, or close to. Sometimes you'll see caddies on the LPGA, for example, take one or two steps to the side. And sometimes you kind of wish that they had taken more, more, that sometimes they still seem a little too close. But it does, it, it can be, can be close. And if, sometimes if you have, if, if you see some, a caddy that's borderline, you might just say, look, next time, just take an extra step. And make absolutely sure that you're not close.
And you're standing on the side, it's very difficult to tell. And so perception becomes important.
Well, yeah, and Ken makes a good point, that if you're, say, a referee with this group, and you're at an odd angle to the player, say you're at a 45 to 3 angle, and you see this, who's to say if that caddy is on or close to an extension behind the ball? Unless you're standing directly behind, you can't say for sure. So that's, could be a case where you might go up to the caddy and say, look, you know, I, from my position, I couldn't tell, but it looked like you're starting to enter that gray area that might be a breach, so be extra sa- safe, just make sure you take one more step to the side. Alright, rule 14-3, which talks about artificial devices, unusual equipment, as well as the abnormal use of equipment. And this rule prohibits the player during the stipulated round. It's okay to do all this stuff outside the stipulated round, but it prohibits him from using an artificial device or a piece of unusual equipment, or to use any equipment in an abnormal manner. And we'll see some examples of that. A, that might assist him in making a stroke or in his play, not that it actually does, but that has the potential to assist him. B, that has, for the purpose of gauging or measuring distance or other conditions, for example, wind, that might affect his play. Or C, that might assist him in gripping the club, although there are some exceptions, that a plain glove or gloves may be worn. Resin powder, drying, or moisturizing agents may be applied, whether to the hands or to the grip. And a towel or handkerchief may be wrapped around the grip. A couple of exceptions to that. First is really a medical exception, that it's okay for a player to use such a device if the equipment or device is designed for, has the effect of alleviating a medical condition, the player has a legitimate medical reason to use it, and the committee has satisfied that this use does not give the player an undue advantage over other players. So this is why, for example, we see players that apply, play in USGA championships, have to go through a screening process when they enter the championship to say, look, I need, I'm gonna have to wear a wrist brace, or a thumb brace, or whatever. And this is why, and support that with documentation from their doctors, and then USGA will consider, say, say, if this is for the US Senior Open, if such a device might give the player an undue advantage. They have their own internal guidelines for that. A second exception, a player is not in breach of this rule if he uses equipment in a traditionally accepted manner. Which if, which by itself sounds a little odd, so let's look at two decisions that contrast that. Let's look at 14-3/11 and 14-3/12. 14-3/11 holds that a player may not use an actual plumb line to help himself read the green. Does the plumb line be considered an artificial device? Then the next decision, slash 12, talks about, okay, what, if the player holds up his putter and uses that as a plumb line. Well, ordinarily, you would think, well, now he is, that's an abnormal use of equipment. He's using the putter other than for its originally intended use. But as we know, that that has long been part of the game, and that's now traditionally accepted. So exception 2 to rule 13, or rule 14-3 would allow the player to use his club as a plumb line. And now let's look at the penalty statement to this rule, because this is new for this year. Prior to this year, as soon as you used an artificial device, unusual equipment, or used equipment in an abnormal manner, you were disqualified. Now, for the first offense, the penalty is just going to be the general penalty of loss of hole in match play or two strokes in stroke play, but for a subsequent, for a second offense, the player would be disqualified. And let's look at a new decision or two about that for this year. A decision 14-3/19, which sounds a lot like what happened to Julie Ester in an LPGA tournament a year or two ago. Where she was having to wait on the 10th tee of her round, she placed a weighted donut on a golf club to warm up when it became her group's turn to play. And then, so after taking several practice swings with that call, the player then adds an additional weighted donut, takes a few more practice swings. So has the player breached rule 14-3 more than once? And that's important. Would the penalty be two strokes, or would it be disqualification? Answer is, as related acts result in one rule being breached more than once, the player incurs a single penalty, loss of hole or a two-stroke penalty. But then, though, let's look at the next decision, decision. 14-3/20. During play of the first hole, a player places an alignment rod at his feet, in breach of rule 14-3A, incurring a penalty of two strokes. During play of the fifth hole, the player again breached rule 14-3, whether with an alignment rod or in some other manner. What is the penalty for a second breach? Well, then it is a disqualification. And that's, that change will take a little getting used to. Because so, you know, I think so many of us are used to, fine, as soon as you do this, it's a disqualification penalty. But I think on the other hand, a lot of us would agree that there are a lot of, there are a number of situations where player was disqualified and that result seemed, a little seemed unduly harsh. For example, let's say, we know in WSGA tournaments, a player is allowed to use, we adopt a local rule, allowing distance-measuring devices. But though, when we conduct the local US Open qualifier, players in that cannot use distance-measuring devices, that local rule is not in effect. A year ago, what if a player is confused, forced fairway of his US Open qualifier, he pulls out a distance-measuring device, shoots the distance? As soon as he does that, what happens? He's disqualified. So now, this year, what would happen if he did it? There'd be a two-stroke penalty for that first hole. And, and hopefully, somebody catch, catches him right away and he doesn't do it again. So a big change. Note, the committee may make a local rule, allowing players to use a distance-measuring device. And that's something that we adopt at WSGA tournaments. And there's an important change with that tucked away in appendix 4 in the back of the book. In that now, starting 2016, if a player uses a distance-measuring device that has some other key function that does not conform to the rules, for example, measuring gradient, the player is not in breach of the rules unless he actually uses that non-conforming function. So that means you can now use your distance-measuring device that has the slope function on it during a round, as long as you don't use the slope function. Previously, just using that distance-measuring device that contained that function was, would result in disqualification. So that, that is a positive change, and also that should help out with lots of things as well. Smartphones have all sorts of uses that as long as you don't use any non-conforming function, you're okay.
That's in the appendix?
Uh, appendix 4. Page 584. Where, where emphasis now is not on what, what functions the device contains as much as it is with what functions the player uses.
Couple of questions from the European Union. It says, under 14-3, abnormal use of equipment. And then, the person goes on to say glove under left arm fit and practicing swing, is this a breach? Apparently, it happened to Career Builders, the Palm Springs tournament last weekend with Duffner. Considering he won the tournament, I'm assuming it's not a breach.
First, please tell me Gary's not the one who wrote that.
Gary is not.
Oh, okay, did, did he tell the day about that? Didn't know if he wanted a second opinion. Alright, so the question was that apparently Jason Duffner made a practice swing with his glove under his left arm, is that permissible? And what's interesting is when you read the rule itself, you could, you know, arrive at the conclusion of, well, wait a minute, he's using equipment in abnormal manner. It prohibits that. But there is a decision that establishes that, that, I mean, a useful principle, and, but you have to know the decision. Let's look at this, it's another pair of decisions, 14-3/6 and slash 6.5. First one, 14-3/6, holding a ball in hand against grip while putting. So the player does that when he actually makes a stroke. Well, now this player's going to be in breach of rule 14-3, because he's using equipment in abnormal manner. Okay, that makes sense. But then the next decision, 6.5, what if, when the player does that for a practice swing or practice stroke between holes? Is that okay? And the decision says, the prohibition in rule 14-3 against using equipment in abnormal manner applies to strokes that count in the player's score and not to practice swings or practice strokes. So really, what Duffner is doing with his glove is similar to this. As long as he did that in a practice swing or practice stroke, he's okay. If he did that during an actual stroke that counts in his score, then he would be in breach of rule 14-3.
And you know what the rationale was for revising the rule, and it was a situation, was it like adoption situation that occurred?
Well, in terms of the penalty?
No, it just, well, yeah, that wouldn't be a penalty.
Well, and the penalty, I think there've been enough situations where, for example, there's a case with Julie Ester a few years ago on her 10th tee. She was waiting, waiting, took out a weighted donut, made some practice swings, and was disqualified. And people thought that, you know, the penalty just didn't fit the crime there. And it could be the case in the first hole, player pulls out a rangefinder when there's no local rule in effect, for him to be disqualified right away. I think they thought that was too, too severe. But the, the message of decision 14-3/6.5 has been, that principle has been in the rules for a long time. That decision is somewhat new, maybe 2008 or 2010, but the principle's been there for, for a long time.
We have another question that says, a referee is notified that the player, that a player used a donut on a club on hole one, and then again on hole two. You know, would it be a disqualification penalty because he did it twice?
Oh, okay.
And I think this begs the question of when the involvement gets, you know? Is it the separate breaches, or the notification by the referee?
Okay, alright, so the question is, a player made some practice swings with a weighted donut in the first fairway, and then again on the third tee. So what should the penalty be? And in that case, since it's happened twice, he would, he would wind up being disqualified. And if the, if the referee becomes aware of that, I, I think that's the type of thing that you can go out and ask the player during this round.
So it's the breaches, not the notifications?
Uh, uh, correct. That, that, this, this is, that's, that's a good question. This is different than, for example, rule 4-4A, which says that when you have too many clubs, that if you realize on the seventh hole you have too many clubs, well, okay, you had two penalty strokes in number one, two penalty strokes in hole number two. And then on number seven, you have to stop using, you have to declare a club out of play. Because that's, that procedure is based on your knowledge as to when you were in breach of the rules. That is not the case in rule 14-3. That, this is independent of the player's knowledge that he was in breach of the rule. So if he, even if he's completely unaware, for example, if there's a decision, I think it's the next one, 14-3/21 about player plays his tee shot while wearing a non-conforming glove, continues to wear the glove until after making a second stroke. Is he going to be disqualified? Answer is yes. That even though he never took the glove off, he had two separate strokes.
And there are all types of tests in Europe over in Europe. Another question, in using equipment in an abnormal manner during the practice swing. Is, oh, is using equipment in an abnormal manner during the practice swing different from using an artificial device, i.e. a donut, in a practice?
Oh, okay, alright, good, good question. There is a difference between using an artificial device in a practice swing and using equipment in abnormal manner during a practice swing. And part of the distinction gets, well, the distinction really resides with what the device itself is and what its intended use is. So for, for example, sticking a glove under your left arm, makes some practice swings, that's fine. Is that's, glove is normal equipment, but you're using it in abnormal manner, so it's under that exception under 14-3/6.5. But if the player were to, though, pull out, say, some strap that David Ledbetter sells, you know, wrap it around his arm and tie it around his waist and do this and that, that's really intended to help him with his swing. That's an artificial device, and you can't do that at all. That's an artificial device, and you can't do that at all with a practice swing. A weighted donut, for example, would be the same thing, just making a practice swing with a weighted donut, because that's an artificial device designed for that purpose, would fall under that and not under 14-3.6.5. Alright, let's see. You know, I tell you, why don't we, why don't we go ahead and take a break, and then we'll finish up. We'll resume with rule 14-4. So let's take a 10-minute break and we'll resume at 10:21.